...be sober about that.
Okay, because I just want to make sure the inspectors are being...
Yes, sir.
And we went over the thousand dollars. Basically, you obtain low-income housing tax credits, we get a thousand dollar payment. This also goes along with the tax exemptions for the housing project, correct?
The tax exemption for the improvements is a 50% exemption based on the nonprofit general partner.
Correct. I believe that's what it said. And as it is now, what I'm trying to understand, the partnership actually has two or three partners at this time, correct?
Yes.
So, what I was reading in here, after 15 years, the note should be paid off in 15 years, correct?
It's a 15-year note with a 30-year amortization schedule.
10 years.
And so they'll be, so you'll probably amortize in the first 15 years because it's front-end loaded on interest like all mortgages are. You'd probably amortize 30-something percent of it.
So for the note you paid off, it takes 30 years, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you always pay on the mortgage first, pay the interest, it's just the way it is?
Yes.
One thing I was interested in, I found in there, is that after 15 years, NRP could sell or relaive their title or ownership in the property to one of the other shareholders, is that correct? You have to read the clause you're referring to. If you could reference it for me and I can take a look at it. Let's see. I'll use that to cut it down. I have, "NRP has a right to sell the building out for 15 years when the note is paid off." Or if someone wants to assume the note or pay it off, "Sell or conveyance will not affect the lease agreement, nor does the city have any right to be involved or approve of the transaction," era.
Okay. I think what that has to do with is the tax credit expiration. So the tax credits are 15 years, even though we're agreeing to extended affordability of another 15 years. And there's a series of federal rules that you agree to to allow a nonprofit to purchase it. So what that would mean is that CHR or another nonprofit could be allowed to purchase our interest out.
Right. Okay. And if that was to occur, we really had no interest. I mean, we can't get involved in that type of situation, correct?
Well, I think you could get involved if, for example, let's say that you had a community housing development organization that was specific to Balcony Heights, which many communities have. If you wanted that entity to make a bid for the interest under the way the law is written, you could do that. So, like, for example, the city, the city of San Antonio has, well, calls them captive development nonprofits that are utilized by the different development, housing development organizations in the city, under the Housing Trust Fund and under the Housing Authority. So if you wanted to form one of those, that would, could be to your benefit.
Okay. The other thing I noticed is that unless the property goes into foreclosure or, other than that, we would pick up the lease unless we did, you can't get involved in restructuring the lease at any time, correct?
You can't restructure the lease during the term of the lease, but if there were a financial difficulty or a transfer or something, there are certain points when it's possible that you could restructure the lease. Like, for example, at the 30-year point, so there's a, there's a 15-year expiration of the tax credits, and there's extended affordability for another 15 years, at which point in 30 years, development becomes market rate. So, at that point, if you wanted, and maybe at that point, you know, it's wherever the city is at, you may say, "Hey, great, we want to have this 100% market rate at this time, and we want to rehab it, and these are certain incentives we can offer, and part of it would be some change in the lease that I can't really foresee." Or you might say, you know, "We want extended affordability because we have a big workforce here, and, you know, we're renting to medical center employees that need the affordable units, so we want to enter into extended affordability." There's a mechanism, but what you wouldn't be able to do is say, "You know what? Right now, in the middle of the lease, we're going to charge $10,000 on my rent, and we're going to tip the financial structure over." So...
Right. Just looking at for the citizens, the way I was looking at it, but I know we'll get into concessions that you made to the city here in just a little bit. But the way I was thinking that, assuming that we're doing this HUD, had said that the property will belong to the city in 30 years. I'm just assuming that's two pieces of property over there. I don't know about this structure here, but it would be the city's property after 30 years.
It's the city's property always. It's now, I mean, when we sign this agreement, it's still your property, it's a lease. And after 30 years, what HUD is referring to is the expiration of the affordability period. But it's y'all's property, it never changes, it's always your property.
Well, I understand that, but I was in one of our executive meetings, I, maybe I shouldn't question...
Executive session?
Yeah. I, one of the attorneys sort of said that...
Can I discuss an executive session with you, please? I'm sorry.
Well, now that everything's out in public, this is being publicized, I think so.
Sir, is there something you want to talk about first, or maybe you were about to bring this up, because we didn't hear that?
Uh, no, no, that's quite all. I was just, I thought I heard it differently than what's being prepared at this time. I thought 30 years would have the property, would be free and clear from HUD.
Do you want to step back for a few moments, and say you've addressed it, see if there's something that can be addressed?
Sure. Sure, you and I, just...
No, that's okay. No, that's okay.
Okay.
That's all right.
Yeah, I mean, what you understood, you could certainly talk about, but we would prefer not to talk about that.
Okay. All right. Over in section 1919, where it says, "Partial release," oh, that's around page 38 and 37, there's somewhere, page... 38? 1919, is that concerning strictly the NRP as far as accessibility for the power trucks or emergency vehicles? That's the way I'm reading it, is that it's for the accessibility of emergency vehicles?
That's exactly what I mean.
Yeah. Because we submitted a certain plan to TDHCA, so we need a buy-by-the-plan, but we're glad to try to accommodate anything that the city wants, we'll present to TDHCA. But if they object, we don't want to blow, we don't want to blow the development up over an objection. So that was what we were trying to address.
Right, right. Sections 1920, 20.1, 20.2, 20.3 are concerning reciprocal parking here at the Justice Center. It had been mentioned, but not really gone into detail until I received this information. So this time, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. I know that HUD had said that we could have parking over on the street side, and y'all made real good accommodations for that. Of course, in 1920.1, it says that, well, that's your park. There's like 26 parking spots at the Justice Center. They referenced 54, but during the day, that wouldn't exactly be correct with all the police cars, employees, and activities here.
I've been thinking about this just from a pragmatic standpoint, and, you know, we're managing it, we're your neighbor, we, you know, obviously want, we don't want to have people parking on the street if there's empty spaces in the lot. So maybe we can have a sticker system, or in a, you know, in a visitor pass system. I think what we don't want to have happen is somebody comes home from work, and they pull in, and they can't get a space. And so, but, you know, we don't need, you know, we just need to have a system to manage that. I think a simple sticker is probably a good, good way to do that, but I'll have, I want to talk to our management department. And if you want to do a separate parking agreement that specifies all the details, be glad to sit down and do that. We don't want empty spaces for no reason sitting there. This is a partnership with y'all, so...
Well, my main concern was, of course, most of this you refer to as strictly being daytime parking overnight on either premises, which actually, if y'all needed to use nighttime parking over there, you should be able to use them. I would agree. I can see a bigger safety concern with vehicles being parked over here at night, officers bringing suspects in, having a clear side as to what's going on around them.
Sure. I mean, in general, we're thrilled with the police presence in property. I mean, that was a major factor in being able to market this, I think, to, to hopefully a new clientele who wouldn't be considering Balcony right now. But I think, you know, we do police substations and properties that we think are going into cutting-edge neighborhoods, and this is already here. So this is really a big plus for us. So whatever we need to do to have more police visibility and presence, we'll do. And, you know, we're glad to work that out in management level. We hope that we'll get a lot of, we hope we'll get some police officers moving in there. We welcome the opportunity to have cars overnight there, too. We love that, so...
One concern I have with the parking here is that the building and the parking lot are under the crime control district. I don't know of us having to be discussing that or anything, or if we need to have a call meeting to get approval. The, what we sort of have here is a lease agreement that allows the building and parking lot to be here, and furnishing is dispatched for, with the city, but the function of the building comes under the crime control district. So I think we might need to have a call meeting, which I will attempt.
If you don't mind, actually, you know, pending, I think we can approve this tonight. I've discussed this with the investors, just like we mentioned earlier about the 65 here. It's actually 66, so that's acceptable term of the lease. But the, if you, if y'all would like, we could, we don't, we have enough parking at our proposed Conys lots to accommodate entirely. We don't, we can strike 19.2, 19.20.2 and accept the lease pending, striking this one item. So in that case, we would not be able to use the Justice Center parking.
That's fine. If you don't, if y'all don't want that, we would agree to that.
So if you have objections without having to do that, we could simply approve the lease of striking that, protect that one. Again, 19.20.2. Right, you read, that would be the correct item?
I don't care. So, okay. The landlord's use of tenants' property will be limited to on the street. 19.21, the outright, 19.22, is reciprocal right for them to use the Justice Center. What they're suggesting is that they would strike the reciprocal aspect. So we would have the right, Conys have the right to use their property, their parking on the street, but they would have no right to use the Justice Center.
And our parking is necessary for court or ACOG training, which is my main concern. So that's just primarily, that's just the daytime, no overnight?
There's no overnight, right, on the street? For anyone, even for their people. I mean, you wouldn't want somebody to just park a second car out there, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So there's nobody parks on that street. There's those, there's those strips along the street overnight.
This is not unique to this particular ground lease. This is something that is standard, correct?
Well, this is a negotiated point because of the way that this particular property's put together and how it's configured. But you're, you're free to negotiate it. So if you don't, if they're willing to let go of the Justice Center, then that's also the benefit of the city. I would, I would suggest that you approve that, and that's to your benefit. My concern, by the way, the reason I put no overnight at the Justice Center was because I was thinking, again, you have people, department compless, might have a second car, they might have a boat, they might have something they want to park over here just 24/7, so, you know, month after month, and they have no, you'd have no right to tell them to leave. So if it was just temporary for, you know, during the day, that would be okay. But I think where we've gone, we've progressed now beyond that, they're willing to let go of the Justice Center altogether. That's a good thing.
Just a couple more things, if you don't mind, Mayor. The parking space then, over there at the NRP will be responsible for maintaining. I know we're responsible for the first one put in. It depends on how council feels about that. The other thing, which you touched on, was the commercial space, 4,000 square feet. We really didn't know if it was going to be 3,200 or 4,000 square feet that the city could use.
It was an approximate 4,000 when we said 4,000. I think the actual one is 3,526 square feet or something, if I'm not mistaken. Something like that, right, Mark? Do you remember? It was right around that, yeah. And the city has the option, the city has a six-month option to decide if they want to, for anything, yeah, and for the just common area maintenance charges, you know, exactly.
And the other question being that I saw down here, that the finish-up cost, would that be on the city itself, or...
Well, we will, we will, we will, it just depends on your definition of finish-up. We're finishing out to a warm white box. So it'll be...
This is a warm white box.
Essentially, yeah. But the fixtures, stuff like that, the city will be responsible for finishing that out.
So lighting fixtures?
Lighting fixtures are your responsibility. We'll wire it, and we'll put in the drop ceilings, and we'll, I mean, we could easily put in just some fluorescent bulbs, but...
White means lights, too.
Okay, so, yeah. Well, I meant like other fixtures, like a...
Finish the space. If there are kind of wall sconces or things like that, minimizing walls. And also, there are four pairs of bathrooms, is that correct, or two pairs of bathrooms?
Two pairs of bathrooms, four separate, four separate rooms.
Four, yeah. So if you want to take, if you want more space, you want to take those walls, we'll credit them and move them around. You have, in other words, there's a certain amount of drywall and bathrooms and fixtures in the budget. That's all creditable. If you want to take all that money, do a different plan, we'll credit that. And then to your build-out beyond that, that would be in your, your cost.
Okay. The next question, would, I think you answered this already. So we don't pay rent, but we would need to pay maintenance fee like you would if you had a townhouse?
Common area maintenance, called CAM charge, and there could be a, there could be a tax stop in there. We'll, you know, it depends on how that's, again, we'll want to get a opinion, but I think there's going to be a property tax in there. I, I believe, we'll have to, you know, that's...
Let me help you with that.
Please.
Is this 4,000 foot structure going to be separate, physically separate from it maintenance? Does it stand alone? Or is it taxed?
Yes.
So you're going to have to own it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So if they have the simple title to the prop, to those improvements, it'll be on the taxable. And even though a city or a nonprofit is occupying it, it's going to be on the taxable. So what they've proposed in their lease is to pass through any taxes to you to pay, because it'll be on the taxable. They'll have to pay taxes. So they're, I guess what they're, they've negotiated is a term where they're not going to pick up our taxes, you know, not pick up the taxes for that space. They want to pass that on to whoever's using it.
I think.
At 50%?
No, I don't think they'll, I think they'll be fully taxed on the commercial space because the 50% relates to the residential units.
Right. I think, I think that's right.
Okay. Just, I think, no more, I think, may have got it wrong. And of course, we'll have to carry our own insurance on the structure inside, like we do, we would do here, and so on and so forth.
We have insurance on the building, and you would have insurance on your client and so forth.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you. No, it's my pleasure.
Councilman, you have a chance, and there's...
I have a couple questions. Is, also, the other guards are still outside? Could you ask them, come here? Would you come up to one of you, please?
Okay, sir.
I need an expert on prisoner handling. My esteemed colleague was concerned about people parking over here in respect to prisoner handling. When you bring a prisoner on premises here, you take him through the solid board and close the door, correct?
Yes, sir, that's protocol.
That's all I need. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Always.
Thank you. And I have another comment. Your other facilities that you've built in town, we went to see Savoy's outstanding facility.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that you had several SAPD or different law enforcement officers living there.
Yes.
And you had an agreement with them that they also provided security?
Yes.
Do we anticipate a similar arrangement here?
Yes, we have a provision for a courtesy officer unit here, correct? Could you explain that?
We have a provision for a courtesy officer, where they either get reduced or free rent in exchange for security services. But that's something that's usually our management company works out with whichever officer kind of, you know, decides he wants to, he or she would like to live there. So it's more of an act of the effect thing, but there is a provision and allowance for it.
Well, in-house is certainly nice, but we have a very capable police department here, too. So they would have twice the security they had at Savoy's because it'd be right across the street.
Those, yes, roughly.
Right. And the concern over crime control, this is not for you, this is just a comment. The concern over crime control district, we currently are under a lease with the crime control district and the city of Balcony. Refresh my memory, this is Bucker, that provides us with so many square feet of leased space in here for the city, all functions. And in regards, which is a trade-off between the value of the land that's here and the value of the lease cost to us, what the lease cost to us would be from the crime control district. So that's a wash. I think we went through that last summer. We did a nice summer on that. We fried that fish several times. So we're here legally. We don't have control of this building. It's a crime control district. But the city hall function that's here right now is here legally under a valid lease.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And that's available for anyone to stay in your life. This is Conus Bucker. So this is not your first time, Mr. Marcin, to our, kind of to a agreement, right?
No.
You've been doing this for a while.
A little bit.
And I agree with Councilman Galian. I've seen the property put over there a couple of times. I'm very, very impressed with the quality of work that you do and the professionalism that you're working, that you're giving to us and helping us to, to make this the best possible redevelopment for us. Because the way I look at it, I'd like to live there someday. And I've talked to my husband and just own the house. And, but, this is going to be a wonderful opportunity for Balcony Heights to have a new development after 33, 34 years of not having anything new here. This is going to be a really boost to our city, our economy, our reputation, because I know that other people are looking at Balcony Heights now. They're going to start noticing us. And if my dream, and see, tell me if I'm right, what I see happening is that this is going to be the catalyst for other people coming in, other developers like you, hopefully you, and refurbishing or revitalizing other areas in our city.
Mayor, thank you for saying that. We met with Mr. Reed on the hospital board, and when the hospital, the medical center was planned out, they did not plan any housing, which works to the great benefit of Balcony Heights. I think that long-term, this will be the start of a recruiting tool. They're very excited. Our management company plans to work directly with them. And to not only to lease the market rate units, but the affordable units, because almost two-thirds of each hospital are actually affordable income level, employee salaries. So, you know, that's going to make the, the wheels turn at the hospitals. And it's, there hasn't been a good recruiting tool for those folks, you know, because there's no new units up there that aren't, if there are, the handful of them are very expensive market rate up, you know, even or north, there's a couple tucked in here and there. So we think that that's going to be fantastic. And, you know, as well, the entire commercial corridor here has giant parking lots in front. I noticed that the lax furniture building was, is demolished now. And, you know, there's an opportunity, I think, for creating higher-density mixed-use all along the corridor that would, this could become the residential mixed-use district for the medical center. And there's, you know, the, certainly the access in the, in the streets and the street grid is very conducive to that. So we hope this will be the first of many that we do with y'all.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Joe, did you have a question? If you'll come up, please, say your name and address.
Hi, Joe Bobby's Lane. Just one question. This is a unique situation. Trust me, it gets above my head pay grade. What's our liability as residents and as the city if something goes awry with it? Because businesses fail, or things happen, or somebody falls down, police breaks down, God forbid. What's the liability for the city?
This question you want?
Sure. I can answer that in a number of ways. One, the property carries for liability insurance. Two, the property's in a limited partnership. So the limited partnership is another shield of liability. Three is that if we violate the land lease, which there are, I mean, we have to maintain a property on there. You're not leasing this to us just for anything. We're required to maintain that. So you would have the right, under we violated that, to take it back. I feel, feel a little sorry, so...
Well, knowing your reputation in town, that's not going to happen.
Uh, no. I live here.
You know, they could have you business-wise.
Yes.
Let's not worry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council, if, does y'all have a question?
Uh, just a couple real quick. Under the steward title, I noticed that it says sellers, the city of Balcony Heights, first users or borrowers, is that just common phrasing? Not that you're a leaser and you're the borrower?
Essentially, if you're looking at the agreement, it's interchangeable, is that?
Well, it's the title.
Yeah. It's interchangeable. If you want to refer to it in its private area, you can do the same thing to it. It's interchangeable.
Okay.
Any questions? What's on the title commitment? Whether those boards have varying thickness?
When, I'm sure that when the title commitment was issued, I wasn't involved at that point, but when it was, they just stuck in pretty simple list, the interest in the property, and named, you know, the city as the owner and, and NRP as the buyer. That, this commitment needs to be revised. It won't be, it won't be issued as a title policy to NRP in this format, because that's not the interest being conveyed. It'll be a leasehold estate interest.
Okay.
Title policy.
And then, one more thing, there's a Schedule C for steward title. Number six down there, it says, "Company requires this transaction to be authorized by proper process as established by the, the, the city charter of the city of Balcony Heights."
So...
So should, would be more proper to say by resolution?
Yes.
By resolution regarding this transaction for, of the city of Balcony Heights?
Right, but again, this is just sort of a catch-all, the title company is stuck in here, whatever you do tonight, it's an official action, the city will satisfy this requirement.
Then they don't become part of the schedule?
Right.
They will, in other words... Burn everything out of the top.
Okay.